Good evening. Calling to order the Ocean Side Planning Commission meeting for December 13th. Commissioner Hayes, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands on one mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice
Thank you. City Planner, would you please do the roll call?
Good evening. Chair Rosales, present. Vice Chair Morrissey. Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Hayes. And Commissioner Rains, we will mark as absent. So you do have a quorum tonight. All members, all five members are in the chambers for the record.
Great, thank you. We'll go to communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any slips to speak on any matters?
Mr. Chairman, we have no request to speak on non-agenda items.
Great, thank you. Approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was November 8th. Any discussion, edits, or modifications, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Are we voting by hands or are we using our electronic?
You'll have to use hands tonight.
Okay. I'll go in, as we have been doing, and ask for an oral yes or no. So Commissioner Balma?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
I was absent, so abstained.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
And I too am a yes on the minutes.
We'll record that as five in favor and one abstention. Commissioner Hayes?
Thank you. Don't see anything listed on the consent counter. And it indicates our next item, a transportation item, that there's nothing but. City Planner, if we could, I'd like to take this a little bit out of order. So we have nothing listed on the transportation items, but if you look to your agenda, item seven is a discussion item. Request to establish permit parking on El Monte Drive. It's part of the preferential parking permit program. Unless there's any objections, I'd like to take this item first. Don't see any objections. So we're going to have staff do a short presentation on this.
And Mr. Chairman, just to correct the vote on the minutes, it was four in favor and one abstention.
Hey, we're ready. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tila Cotter. I'm with Transportation Engineering. I am here in place of Abraham Chen, my coworker, who's also an associate engineer as myself. He was not able to make it today. The item I am presenting tonight pertains to the establishment of a permit parking in a portion of El Monte Drive, as you can see on the exhibit that I have up on the screen. A little history about this neighborhood that's north and south of Cannon Drive. Back in 2005, we had brought this item to Planning Commission and to council and established permit parking on Libby Street, a portion of Foster, a portion of Hilldale, and Gray Street. Then later on, in 2007, we came back for more sections of the neighborhood and established permit parking on Carey Road, Pressline Drive, and Krieger Street. And then in 2016, we established the rest of Foster Street and, well, I don't know why Saratoga is highlighted there, but it was a portion of Foster Street up to Saratoga. And then we did try to look at El Monte, but there was some opposition at the time. And so to finalize the rest of Foster Street and complete that, we moved forward with that portion of the street. So as you can see, a majority of the neighborhood, north of Cannon Drive and then south of Cannon, has been established as permit parking. We do try, I mean, as you can see, this has been piecemealed from 2005 until now. We do try to look at neighborhoods as a whole and move forward with it so that this doesn't happen. But when permit parking came into existence in the ordinance, it started out very small and kind of, we saw the repercussions of traffic bleeding on two parallel streets and neighboring streets, and hence, that's what happened here. So now looking at El Monte Drive, we are recommending permit parking between Foster Street and Carey Street only. And 75% of the residents on that street did sign the petition in support of the permit parking program. And I also learned tonight that one of the homes that didn't sign the petition is because there's no one living there. And then another one, from what I understand, they are in support of it. They just never signed the petition for various reasons, but from what I understand, they are for it. And so in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend for approval by City Council for the establishment of permit parking for the preferential parking permit program on El Monte Drive between Foster and Carey Road. And I welcome any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Tia. Yeah, I had one question. I don't know if you mentioned it, I missed it. I didn't see in the staff report. But what makes this neighborhood unique that they need or want the parking permit? Is it because there's a church nearby or?
Chair, that's a good question. The reason why this all began back in 2007 is because mainly the apartments that are on Canyon Drive. And I think, as you have known over the years and many projects coming forward, there's not enough parking. A lot of people, even though they might be living in a one-bedroom apartment, might have multiple cars or a two-bedroom apartment, still might have multiple cars. And those apartments were built so long ago where the requirements was not as stringent, and they might only have one parking space. And on Canyon Drive, there is no parking allowed. And so people then go into the neighborhood and then bombard into the neighborhood, and then the neighborhoods have a lot of concerns where they don't have a place to park, there's trash left behind, there's other things going on. And so hence, now we've come to this point where now there's, El Monte is now getting impacted because all these other streets have permit parking. So with the restricted parking that's at the apartments, now they utilize whatever's left on the neighborhood streets.
So do you think it'll shift over to the other side of Canyon? Because I know there's residential on the other side of that as well.
There is permit parking on the north side and on the south side.
So it just kind of moves along until, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Go ahead.
Why not go ahead and just include the rest of El Monte at this time?
We did try, actually, a couple times, but there was some people who were very much not for permit parking in El Monte. And it has, there was a lot of conflicts with people who did not want it. And so we kind of left it as this. And we figured, granted, we do not necessarily want to or promote piecemealing these neighborhoods, but this one's very just unique in the way it was the first neighborhood and how it's been going on. And we figured, if it ends up becoming an issue, then those people will come to us and we'll address it then.
Any other questions? Okay. And so we're also looking for public input on this item, correct? Okay. Thank you, Tia. Do we have any slips to speak? If not, if you want to speak to it, I know we have one slip, but anybody else who's here can speak to this item as well, minus the slip. So go ahead, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers that have signed up with speaker slips, but as you mentioned, we can allow others to speak on this item. The first is James Stewart, and the second speaker will be Elizabeth Krakowski.
Come on forward. For the record, if you give us your name.
Yes, it's James Stewart. And thank you, Commission, for hearing this. It's been a long time for us. As a resident on El Monte for six years, we've been dealing with this and the different iterations that we've gone through, and truly appreciate having this audience. Specifically, a couple of those questions I'd love to address. Why not the rest of El Monte? There is a little bit different culture, for lack of a better term, at the end of the street, and they have quite a few vehicles themselves, taking up all of that on more of a permanent basis. Most of the people on the other side of El Monte have fewer vehicles, there's fewer people living in those houses, and so those spaces on the street remain open during the daytime when they're then utilized by the rest of the high-density units and their residents. The other element is the flow on that road. Specifically, coming off of Canyon, that portion of Carey that turns into El Monte is a bit of a cut-through to other neighborhoods. And so we do have a much higher volume of traffic on that one little section of El Monte. And once we have more vehicles on both sides, because it's both a slope as well as a curve, we get a reduction of sight lines. And so you have vehicles crossing the double yellow lines, avoiding all the parked cars. We've got, you know, kids in the driveways, you know, like a normal neighborhood with this extra volume of traffic that's getting pushed to the middle of the road. That's another element. The final element that really is the one that can be troublesome is what happens after it becomes the park-and-ride, which is oftentimes what it is. So it's fine during the middle of the day, cars parked there, it's not that big of a deal. Five o'clock, six o'clock, a lot of those people are being dropped off. Oftentimes, they're the vehicles that are oversized, that don't fit into the other apartment spaces. And we have people that linger, that loiter, that, you know, have a couple beers after get off work, that trash and debris gets left behind, OPD has got plenty to do, you know, our calls to them are, they try to be as responsive as they can on those topics, but oftentimes, they linger till eight or nine o'clock, and response time, they've got other fish to fry. So this is a tool for us to help, you know, help OPD deal with this issue and help us deal with this issue and not have it spilling into our front yards and into our families. So thank you. I appreciate it. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Linda Krakowski.
Good evening. For the record again, could you give us your name?
Elizabeth Krakowski, I live at 2170 El Monte, and I appreciate you hearing our concern. And I pretty much echo everything James has said. I live alone, and to be honest, I have fear sometimes, living in my own house. I've had things taken from my porch. I need to put cameras up, and I can walk outside. I have found beer bottles. I have actually found needles. And it just concerns me about that kind of neighborhood that I'm living in. But more than anything else, I have the fear of living alone with something going on like that. And thank you very much for hearing my plea.
Thank you. Those are the only slips we have, but again, if you are in the audience and want to speak to this item before we close it, you're welcome to come up. Okay, thank you. One question, Tia, for you. When we, assuming this gets approved by us and the City Council, when this goes into effect, those that would be affected by, in this case, the residents of the apartment building, do we communicate ahead of time that this is coming, or do we just kind of let it happen?
The past is we've just let it happen. If you're asking if we notify the apartment, we do not.
Okay. So, okay, I'll leave it at that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the way this works is we would recommend approval as this body, that the City Council would establish this permit parking, which is part of the preferential park and permit program, on El Monte Drive between Foster and Carey. So looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Commissioner Custer, can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Vice Chair Morrissey, any other discussion? Don't see any, so let's, I'll go by vote again. Commissioner Balma?
I wholeheartedly support your efforts, and yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
And I too register a yes.
For the record, one mark that five in favor, zero against. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks, Tia. Thank you both for coming out. Okay, then we'll go back to item four, which is, and by the way, if you're here for item six tonight, that's been continued until January, certain date in January, which escapes me at the moment, but, so we're only taking on items four and five this evening. So item four is the first of two public hearings, and item four is consideration of tentative subdivision map and regular coastal permit for the revision of an approved four-unit condominium development at 833 South Pacific, going from four to six condominium units, so adding two. Disclosures, this would come to us first as a four condominium unit development in, help me out here, I think it was in 2019. So my disclosure is that I was on the commission at that time, familiar with the location, having been by there. So Commissioner Custer, disclosures?
I read the report. I've been driven by many times. I'm not sure if I was on then. I think I must have been on the commission.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes?
Read the staff report, reviewed the site, and did a little research, just looking in Google Maps.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey?
Familiar with the site, perused the staff report, and familiar with the location, and spoke to one of the investors today.
Thank you. And Commissioner Balma?
I was on the commission when we approved the four-unit condominium. I have the staff report and am very familiar with the site.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Scott.
Hi. Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners, members of the public. I'm Scott Nightingale, here to present Agenda Item Number Four for the consideration of a tentative subdivision map, regular coastal permit for the revision of approved four-unit condominium development to add two additional units for a total of six located 831-833 South Pacific Street. The applicant is Beachwalk City, and his architect is here to represent them. The project site, like I said, is located at 831-833 South Pacific. It's on the northwest corner of Hayes and South Pacific Street, comprised of two legal lots, currently utilized as a short-term rental. The zoning is residential tourist, which allows for the short-term rental that is currently occupying the site, and the land use is high-density. A little background on the site. Back in July 2019, the Planning Commission by a vote of 6-1 approved this tentative map, a development plan, and regular coastal permit for the demo of the nine-unit multifamily complex to enable the construction of a four-unit condo at the site. Soon after that, on March 10th, 2021, the California Coastal Commission, which they received an appeal of the Notice of Final Action from the Planning Commission's decision from a member of the public, they denied the appeal and established said project conditions, which I'll go into. And these conditions enabled the revisions to the project to provide an additional two multifamily units and establish the opportunity for the public parking, not only on Hayes Street, which they originally were proposing, but also on Pacific Street, because that's where the entrance, the actual ingress egress, was going to occupy. And since now they're going off of Hayes Street, that frees an additional parking space, public parking space in the coastal zone. And on April 28th, they submitted this said application, which we're seeing tonight. Here's an image of the existing site, looking towards the north. These small cottages, like I said, are used as short-term rentals. Site has approximately nine units that are overlaying the two properties here. The bungalows were built in 1931. The applicant has submitted historical assessment with the original coastal permit, which shows that the site holds no historical significance. And for the project tonight, they are here for a brand-new tentative subdivision map. Previously, they had a parcel map for the four units. Now, since it's more than four, they need a subdivision map for the Article Six of Subdivision Ordinance, and also a regular coastal permit. This regular coastal permit would actually be a revision to the original approved regular coastal permit for a request to construct the six condominium units within this appealable area of the coastal zone. Some of the conditions that were placed by the Coastal Commission for their approval on the Notice of Final Action and denial of appeal was to add the two additional units, and also to increase the proposed eight tandem parking stalls, which were coming off South Pacific Street to 12. That took some design changes, which the architect has proposed. A new first-level parking garage, which now frees up the access off of Pacific Street. We gain a public parking space, and everything will now go into one bottom-level parking. Project is not expanding in any way larger than what was previously approved, so the units will be smaller. They'll range from 1,800 to about 2,200 square feet. They'll range from five bedrooms and four baths. The first level, like I said, will be revised at the parking garage. They are removing that west-facing retaining wall, per Coastal Commission's request. The access, like I said, has been revised, and also in addition, they've pushed the building further northward, which will enable more public views when looking towards South Pacific Street. Here's an image of the access and the new layout. So those triangles there are for parking areas. So the access now will come off Hayes Street, and they have approximately a 28-foot-wide drive aisle. They're only required to have 24. Per the zoning ordinance, this project only requires one space per unit, so six parking spaces. So they're actually going above and beyond and providing an additional six. And if you can see it here in the shaded area, if you can see this, the pointer's not working, but in the shaded area here, this is the additional parking space that will be provided off of Hayes Street. So we are gaining one public coastal parking space, and also retaining the one off of South Pacific. The project will be fully landscaped. It exceeds the landscape requirement. They're proposing a Mediterranean coastal-themed landscape, which is similar to what was previously approved at the 2019 hearing. Like I said, there's an image of the garage. They're providing additional parking, as well as exceeding the aisle dimensions. Access to the units will come off the interior stairwells, leading from the interior of the garage at two points, west and north. Here's an image of the floor plan, which will be a split-floor plan, which will have two units per each level. So this would be the street level. You've got Unit One with four bedrooms, five baths. Unit Two, five bedrooms and five baths. And the last level here, the unit, Level Three, Unit Three will have four beds, five baths, as well as Unit Four, five baths. Each, like I said, each unit ranges in 1,800 to about 1,200 square feet, or 2,200 square feet. There will be a common area roof deck. We worked with the applicant, I'm sorry, Unit Five and then Unit Six on the third level. And there will be a common area roof deck. We worked with the applicant to ensure that there won't be any rooftop structures, which will further impede any public coastal views. So the access stairwell actually just daylights right as you get to the roof, so there won't be any actual pertainesses or any structures above the floor of the roof at daylights from the third floor. And they will have some transparent glass railing, which will also help with public use. Here's an image of the architecture. It is similar to the previous approval back in 2019. It consists of a contemporary-style design. It's, in terms of bulk and scale, it's similar to a few structures that are located on South Pacific Street, one in particular just right to the south. Here's a better image of the access coming off of Hayes Street, as you can see, the additional parking spot as well. We worked with the applicant on reducing the massing, pushing the project further northward to obtain public coastal views, and this is the product that we were able to get to. The developer did have a public outreach meeting, which they conducted onsite. They sent mailers out to all the occupants and owners within 1,500 feet, asking if there was any questions. They could not only email staff, but email the applicant. But like I said, they also had an onsite meeting. During that meeting, there was no more than a handful of folks that actually attended the meeting, and from what they gained, there was no opposition. I have received about two phone calls, not in opposition, more in questions, but recently today, I have spoke to two individuals who are opposed to the project because of the public parking and some questions regarding the number of units and occupancy, as well as the landscaping. So with that, staff finds that the project is in compliance with the general plan. It achieves a balance of residential land uses. It's consistent with the residential tourist, high-density land use mix in the area. It provides a good transition between, there's some single-family, it's somewhat of an eclectic mix of short-term rentals, single families, condos, and apartments. The proposed residential use is compatible with the area and the location, and especially the coastal zone. And as far as zoning ordinance, it's compliant with everything within the zoning ordinance as far as development standards, bulk-scale parking. Also complies with local coastal program, no public coastal access impacts. There's an existing access there that will remain open. As I discussed, they've redesigned the project to be mindful of the public coastal views, nor is there any public parking impact. They're providing an additional parking, which actually makes this good for the project. Other than that, staff recommends that Planning Commission confirm issuance of the categorical exemption and approve the tentative subdivision map and regular coastal permit by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2021-P34. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here and will make himself now. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott?
So my only question is, so it's being done because it's required by the Coastal Commission? Is that, that's what I read here. Is that correct?
Commissioner Custer, that's correct. Basically, the Coastal Commission stated that they would only approve the project if they added the additional units with the other conditions, which I mentioned.
Right. And that's because of the state mandate that we have a certain number of units?
Seeing that this project is in the residential tourist district, they were looking for more visitor accommodation units. They're aware that these were going to be used as short-term rentals. So with that, removal of nine for only four, they found that, you know, the base density requires, or the density here requires, the highest density is six units. density is six units. So knowing that, they said, well, why don't we ask for at least go within the density range? Because the nine units now are legal non-conforming. They don't meet the zoning code. So at least go within the density, and that's what they're doing.
I was just curious.
Good question. Commissioner Ball?
I was also curious on one of the Coastal Commission's requirements, special condition number eight, that restricts construction, storage, staging, and activities on-site. So if you're constructing a large building as such as this, all the materials, I know there's a lot next door to it, there I guess they must have a nice relationship with that person to be able to store materials, I guess. But I can't understand why the Coastal Commission would restrict any kind of like storage of what you're building the building with on the site itself. Why is that?
That's a good question. We may have to refer that one to the applicant. I do know that they have a relationship with the owner on the next door, actually on the corner of Wisconsin and South Pacific. So they may utilize that parcel for their storage and their their construction staging. But applicant can share his thoughts on that.
And the other question was they they removed a retain wall that was kind of like just right. Was the retaining wall the one, just the little one that was only a couple, you know, feet high that was kind of like at the entrance into the garage going in? There was a little bit of a wall there. So they're removing that because, again, it's under the three-foot height for visual obstruction of people's view quarters. But why would they want that removed? So that the garage can flood easier? What was that reason?
These are all good questions for the applicant.
Okay, that's my, those are my questions.
Okay, applicant or their representative, if you want to come forward, you've got two questions for sure, but I don't know if you had a presentation as well. So leave it to you.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. My name is Paul Longton. I'm the architect for this project and have been the architect for this project for about five years now as we go in and out of one design for another and adding units. I liked how the question was difficult, and Scott said, we'll let the applicant handle it. That's not a problem. Thanks, Scott. In terms of storing construction materials, if you're aware of 807 South Pacific, which is under construction right now, and it's a massive 25-foot-wide lot, they're handling everything onsite. And I think that will be handled the same way with 833. For example, they're getting two, sometimes three lumber drops a day. And, you know, you just have to be really on the ball in terms of, you know, ordering a material and getting it in. And then what was the other question?
Little, the little wall.
The little wall.
Oh, the retaining wall?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, Tony Ross at Coastal says, okay, let me, you know, see what else I can get. It doesn't really affect the project.
No.
One way or the other. One other item I'd like to add is that of the nine bungalows, the westernmost extends past the string line about nine feet, and we are pulling it in. On the south side, project's actually over the property line, not very much, but a little bit into the right-of-way. And so we're really gaining quite a bit of ocean view. And that's something that we worked with for a long time with Coastal and taking, you know, photographs and shaving a piece back here and shaving a piece there. But I think for what we've got and what the owner wants to accomplish, I like what we have. If anybody else has anything, I think we have people will speak against the project, and I can come back.
Just to clarify on that, I thought it said you can't stage or any storage materials of any kind of construction on-site. So you're saying, yeah, you can get, you can deal with your, as you get deliveries, you can deal with your lumber and all that. But it says here, you can't staging and activities on-site, which means you'd have to go to a next-door neighbor to store the lumber when it shows up.
Yeah, I don't think that makes, that doesn't make sense.
That doesn't make, that's what I'm saying. I don't understand it.
That's the sort of thing that Coastal's not going to come out and be, you know, with their checklist and take a look. It'll get built. It'll get built in a hurry.
Right. Okay.
The enforcement.
That might not be there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Paul.
And thank you very much.
It is a public hearing, so say planner, do we have any slips to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we have no request to speak on a speaker slip.
Okay. I do see some folks in the audience, so if you're here to speak on this item, please feel free to come forward. And for the record, if you give us your full name, I appreciate it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
For the record.
Lean in if you don't, or bring the mic up to you. There you go.
I'm Kerry Cook, resident of the Edgewater Condos, across this cul-de-sac from this development. All the residents of the Edgewater Condos are opposed to the project. Like to see it go back to four units instead of six because of, we think it'll create huge congestion of traffic. It's already overcrowded in that area as it is. It, you know, the other buildings that they built in the past, they staircase the units from the ocean back to allow better viewing for the residents of the or the occupants of the buildings that they put up. This one is more like a hotel, just goes straight up. So we're not real happy about it. And the parking is, I would think, there's going to be a huge amount of need for parking that's just not available for these residents or whoever occupies the building. And we want to make sure that the landscaping around the building at least has the percentage that it's supposed to have, whatever the city ordinance is. The Edgewater Condos has tremendous amount of landscaping around the corner. It'd be nice to see something similar to that. I noticed in the photos, the elevations they showed that there's grass down by the beach along all their buildings. That's nonexistent. It's eroding away clear up to the buildings that exist there right now. If anything, there should be more setbacks for any development going along the coastline there. I can't even believe the Coastal Commission would accept a project that doesn't move that building back further. So this is my concerns, residents of Edgewater concern.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner. And my name is Lisa Harper. And I was one of the people that did meet with the applicant on that Friday morning meeting before a holiday weekend. And there was, you know, a few of us neighbors that went. And most of the flyers went out to people that don't really always live there. So there's, anyway. But we were, we are concerned about the parking situation because do the numbers for the short-term rental, if there's five or six bedrooms, and what is allowed is is two per bedroom plus an additional two. And even if there's, when it was presented to us, there was only nine parking spots. But if you do the numbers, that's a lot of people for even 12 parking spaces. And I know that the company does allow parking at their business, but not many vacationers want to park at a business that is miles away from where they're staying. And most of the short-term rental people bring, you know, two and three cars and a lot of stuff. There's not many vehicles that can, you know, house 10 people. So the parking is an issue. We're also concerned with the parking space that's cut in on Hayes because even though it's been slated as public, it looks like it's a loading zone for the business. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with the 800 block on the on the ocean side, but it's it's pretty much owned by all the same person. And so there's a lot of trucks and a lot of things that go on. And I'm not opposed, you know, there's a lot of good things that have come out of the development on Pacific. I'm not opposed to it. I just want it to kind of be reasonable and and work with the neighbors. And it looks like they they did take some of our feedback at our neighborhood meeting and increased the parking and things like that. And so we just wish they'd take a little bit more consideration. And even though the planner has said only five bedrooms per unit, I would be shocked if there's only five bedrooms per unit. Because a lot of those, I looked at, just walked by 807, which is being constructed right now, and I think there's 14 bedrooms in that one. And that's on a 25-feet foot lot. And I mean, that's a lot of, a lot of density. So just thank you for letting us approach you. And if I did hear this correctly, this is just the first hearing of two?
This item.
Or is this?
This item would be, if it's approved, it would be recommended for approval to the city council. The city council would take it up.
Okay. And the one discouraging thing that we did have when we met with the architect in the in the group, and we were kind of told it was it was kind of a done deal, no matter how we felt or what we said, it was going to be approved anyway. And that was a little discouraging to us.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else want to come forward and add anything to the public One more.
Respond to that question regarding the hearing. This is the one public hearing.
Thank you, Scott.
And then we send off the Notice of Final Action, unless it gets appealed, then it will go to council.
Thank you. Stand corrected.
Emily Harper, I'm the daughter of Lisa Harper, and we're also on Pacific. If you do see the condos that are across the way, they do have like a setback area for view. My concern is, yes, we were on also Pacific, but that cul-de-sac is actually used a lot by the public. So like, somebody who can't afford a place on the water comes down there, gets to get a sunset view, gets to leave. The ones that are closest to the water right now is blocking actually a big portion of that view. And I don't know if they're allowed to do that or not, but when they said they weren't taking away a view of the ocean, that's not correct. Because that's a public cul-de-sac there. So that's my concern. Besides the parking of short-term rentals, which I think we all know, in other cities, they put limits to how many vehicles you could bring for short-term rentals. I'm not sure why Oceanside hasn't put that in place yet.
Great. Thank you for your comments. I don't see anybody else. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion. I guess I have one question. It's been a while since we took up the issue of the and developed the policy for short-term rentals. So I don't remember all the details, but if I recall correctly, if somebody has a short-term rental in this area, and we now have a policy that requires a permit that's reviewed by staff and so forth. So there are requirements for parking that are associated with that. Again, it's been a while since I touched that or we had those discussions. But do I have that right? So in other words, if, say, all these condos are converted to short-term rentals, they have to have adequate parking to accommodate the short-term rental clients, if you will. Excuse me. Thank you.
Commissioner resolves. That is true. Per the short-term rental ordinance, each short-term rental has to at least provide one parking spot for the for the unit itself. In this instance, they're providing two spaces per unit within the garage. And if they will have, if they're going to have staff onsite, I don't know if they're going to be doing ballet. The applicant might want to talk about that, but there may be room for options for that. And then, like I said, they they're providing one public space and retaining the public space on Pacific. So this project is providing well more than what's required per the ordinance.
Okay, I may come back to that. But any other questions for staff or?
The lead.
Yes, Commissioner Hayes.
Thank you. I just have two quick questions. One, I'm just curious, the existing nine units, how many bedrooms and how many bathrooms total do they have?
I believe the nine units are just studios, if I stand corrected.
So it's just nine bedrooms and nine bathrooms?
Exactly. And and the parking that's occurring there now is not meeting the the city code.
Right, there's zero.
They're parking within the right-of-way, which is not compliant. So this project will fix that and rectify that and bring back public sidewalks or increase public access by providing a sidewalk and then providing the one public parking spot.
So if I got this, if I'm doing the math right, though, if I looked at the the way the floor plan's set up, there's nine bedrooms, nine baths currently, this project is going to do five times three and four times three, so 15 plus 12, right? So a total of 27 bedrooms and 27 bathrooms. And they're going to have 12 parking spaces instead of zero. But I think that might be some of the concern that I'm hearing from the residents is, and one of the questions I think that Tom may have been asking is, is there a restrict, is there, are those spaces, are they allocated to each of the units, and the people renting them are restricted to only having those two spaces, no matter how many families they may be having rent the place?
Commissioner Hayes, the parking stalls will be assigned per each unit. So there'll be two spaces per unit. They'll 101, 102. So they'll most likely be numbered. We typically leave that up to the developer to assign the numbers for parking. So yes, they will be assigned. If I can add, though, that like, everyone is aware that this is a short-term rental. A lot of folks that do come here, yeah, they do may bring a car or two, but a lot of other folks that they may Uber or rideshare. Some folks might be coming from the airport, be dropped off by rideshare. So those are other things we look into. So that may free up some parking. And this particular short-term rental operator also has off-site parking off of Vine Street. So those are other options they can they can work into. We can work with the applicant in creating some type of parking management plan and record that into the the site's covenant if needed, if parking is an issue.
Well, yeah, I mean, in the background of all this is, of course, the Coastal Commission wanting the public to have public access to the coast. And so they've actually weighed in, obviously, and said, we want more condos. So there's a very clear stated position by the Coastal Commission to invite more folks in to use this space. They don't address parking particularly. That's left up to the individual cities. But so are the two in conflict? Possibly. But it, yeah, so it's an interesting dynamic, for sure.
Ask one more follow-up?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay. Just, I know our preferential permit parking program that we had, Tila here for earlier talking about, is there, I know it's typically done on a block-by-block basis, but are there enough contiguous properties where there's year-round tenants or owners where you might look at a certain block face adjacent to those buildings and doing some preferential permit parking to protect those who are here all the time?
Commissioner Hayes, I think Tila will help me out on this one, but if I can add.
Oh, you are still here. I'm sorry.
I don't believe we would request any preferential parking, especially in this area, because it is the coastal zone, and we want to keep it open for the public to park. And that is something that the Coastal Commission stresses upon us, to not require limits on on parking in this area. Tila may be able to answer a little bit better for me. But I do, I know that we do allow for residents to have guest passes. So if there is limits on parking within the day, I believe they can have two placards where they can park two vehicles on the street. I'm not sure, is this street, Tila, is this street regulated by hours?
Well, the first thing is, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you, Tila, again, with Traffic Engineering. The Section 10.30 in the city's ordinance states that you cannot do permit parking within the coastal zone.
I have a follow-up. So is there any way to, because I understand, too, parking's a big concern on the street for other residents. Is there any way to have the owner of the property run a shuttle back and forth to the, because Vine Street's a long way to walk if you park your car there?
Commissioner Custer, we can bring the applicant up and see if that's something that they're willing to do, or if that's already existing. But if I could mention, there is a public parking. But if I could mention, there is a public parking lot just west of the tracks, which I believe is less than, less, less than 100 yards from the site.
Right.
So that's another option. But maybe the applicant may be able to help me with answering the question on the shuttle.
Paul, you want to come? Go ahead, Paul.
Well, I know that the person who manages the vacation rental has said, I mean, it's a business proposition. If he cannot get the people in and out in a comfortable way, it's not going to be a good business decision. And he's talked about if he needs to, wants to, provide a shuttle, provide Ubers as just, as just part of the business practice. He's very engaged and very active. And really, when I look at some of the other projects in the 800 block, where you have, you know, a large number of bedrooms and you have two units and you have two tandem spaces and the one tandem slot applies to one of the units, the other tandem slot applies to the other, it's actually reduced parking on Pacific Street. Because people in short-term rentals aren't loading up the garages with the storage that, well, we all do. And they come to park. They want their cars off the street because they're not sure of, you know, what Oceanside's all about. So I think, you know, I appreciate all the commentary about parking, but I feel pretty good about what we've got going here in terms of, when we had the neighborhood meeting, yes, we only had nine parking spaces shown in the basement parking garage. And we got a lot of feedback and said, okay, let's squeeze in a few more. And I felt we were doing what we could to respond to these comments.
Go ahead.
Just to comment about the bedrooms. I mean, when we, we had the four-unit condominium, that was 36 bedrooms and I don't know how many baths, and now we're reduced down to 27. So we've actually lessened the amount of bedrooms with this new proposal that the Coastal Commission has, has asked for. So that's, I think, one good thing possibly in the favor of, of over-parking in cars. But the other thing I was going to ask staff was, you know, we've had so many projects on Pacific Street and we've always asked for the projects to be stepped back, like not, like more like a, like we kind of think we called it a wedding cake kind of a thing. And this one is, like, as one of the people mentioned, it's pretty much straight up and down, right on the coast. And we've never really had, I don't think, a project in my, you know, last time I've been on the commission, that's just been straight up and down. So why, why did that happen? Like, why didn't staff maybe suggest that we want to have it more stepped back? Maybe you'd have to lose a couple bedrooms, but Paul, I don't know what, why that just was so straight up and down on this one. Because I did agree with the public comment on that, that we've never really had a project that's been straight to the string line. You know, it's usually been stepped back. Every project has always been stepped back. You know, you've done a lot of them.
Part of what drove it, and probably really what all that drove it, was that once you go beyond four units, you have to have two exits. And the two exits have to be separate by a certain distance, a certain portion of the diagonal distance of the building. They've got to be at the front and the rear.
Right.
So if you had, whether we're calling the beach side the front or the rear, it doesn't matter, but once you have a stair out there that serves the lowest floor, the upper floors have to go out the same way.
Right.
Now, we did step it back on South Side, where we opened it up to the views going down Hayes Street. So yes, it doesn't step up from the beach side, but it does step back. And there are balconies and cutouts on the South Side.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll say it again, I like the building.
I was going to ask you about the pointed balcony finish. How are you going to be able to clean that little point when the balcony actually comes right into the wall and a?
Me, I'm not going to do it.
That was interesting, Paul. I thought that was, I've never seen that done before. Usually they kind of squirt off a little bit, but it's coming right in as a point.
Right, right in there. Yeah, we'll, we'll blame Tony Ross on that one, too.
Vice Chair Morsi, you had a comment?
Yeah, I did. So I'm looking at the, the pluses on the project that's making better, a better parking scenario than what's existing. It's allowing more tourists, people from out of town, access to Oceanside, and I think that's going to help our downtown businesses. We're getting public sidewalks out of the deal. It's a much nicer product than what we have out there now. There is off-site parking, and I guess I just learned that there's public parking within 100 yards, and then the Coastal Commission wants it. So that, having been said, if there's no other comment, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Planning's recommendation for this project.
Motion's been made. Any further discussions? Will we ask for a second? None? I'll ask for a second. Second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner, we have a motion of Vice Chair Morsi, second from Commissioner Custer. Any discussion? Seeing none, let us, let's vote. Commissioner Obama.
I would support this project, but then ask staff to try to really try to step back future projects from the coast, not let them just continue to just straight up and down.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Custer.
Yes.
And I, too, am a yes. City Planner.
For the record, we'll mark that five in favor, zero against, and we'll note the comment from Commissioner Obama.
Thank you. Continuing then with item five under public hearings. This is a commission's consideration of a zone amendment and local coastal program amendment, amending Article 30, particularly Section 3006 of the zoning ordinance to establish text as part of the ADU ordinance revisions. The applicant in this case is the city of Oceanside. Good evening, Robert.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Rob Demahowski with the Planning Division. And the item before you this evening is requests for a zoning text amendment to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and to establish the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. As a recap, the state legislature enacted new ADU legislation in 2020 intended to further reduce regulatory barriers and streamline the construction of ADUs as a source of housing. The city council adopted revisions to this, the ADU ordinance on August 19th of 2020 to comply with state law. In December of 2020, the California Department of Housing and Community Development released an ADU handbook that provided local jurisdictions and the public an overview of the changes to ADU law, guidance on implementation of mandated zoning and development standards, and clarification on ambiguous provisions found in the government code. In 2021, there is also new legislation affecting implementation of ADU law. Assembly Bill 345 amended the government code to simplify the process for nonprofit organizations such as Habitat for Humanity to sell ADUs to low and moderate income households. And there's also Senate Bill 9 that allows the construction of no more than two dwellings on single-family zone lots and lot splits into two lots. These units are not considered ADUs, but the law does allow cities to prohibit ADUs on properties that take advantage of SB 9 provisions. Staff is proposing to update the ADU ordinance for the purposes of, one, adding clarifying language and technical edits for better implementation of the ordinance; two, to fully describe and implement the ADU provisions as mandated by state law; and, three, adding language to assist with the enforcement of specific conditions of approval outlined in the ADU ordinance. Some of the key provisions include adding language that prohibits ADUs or junior ADUs in combination with dwelling units constructed per SB 9 provisions. So for example, if an 8,000-square-foot lot was subdivided into two parcels, each of those lots could have two units with a minimum of 800 square feet with four-foot setbacks. So there would be a total of four units. Those lots would not be able to add a junior unit or an ADU to, to either of, to any of the units created under that provision. The revision will include a definition of owner occupancy as it applies exclusively to junior accessory dwelling units. The ordinance requires that the property owner of record reside on the property where a junior unit is constructed. In recent months, there has been a debate on who qualifies as a property owner of record. For example, if a property is, is owned by a trust or an LLC, it can be difficult to determine if the owner will in fact live on the premises. So to bring clarity to this issue, the definition states that a natural person with legal or equitable title to the property must reside on the property as the person's legal domicile and permanent residence. The update will specify the methods that both an ADU and a junior ADU can be built on combination on, on a, a single lot. So under the original legislation, I believe it was in 2018 or '20, specified that a junior unit can be combined with the construction of a new detached ADU on a property, and it was very specific to, say, new construction. The law was later amended to allow the conversion of existing structures. So if there was a detached garage or a conversion of living space within the primary dwelling, as well as constructing an attached addition. So those are all acceptable ways to establish both a junior unit and an ADU on, on a property. And state law allows two detached ADUs on multifamily lots with a maximum height of 16 feet with four-foot setbacks. As proposed, the, the provision would be revised to allow the detached ADUs to be built above accessory structures as a second-story unit, subject to meeting the underlying zone district setbacks and lock coverage. So the unit could potentially exceed, have a garage below it, and then the unit built above, as long as the, the height of the base district and those setbacks are met. A new provision would prohibit the use of dual-cylinder deadbolt locks that cannot be openable without a key from inside a dwelling. And this provision is intended to help with enforcement action against the creation of non-compliant rental units that can be partitioned off from the rest of a single-family home. So it's a, it's a provision for, there's, there's a building code, life safety concerns on, an egress door has to be operable from the inside, that you cannot have a dual lock that requires a key on, on both sides. And then also, it would provide code enforcement with the mechanism to, to enforce any non-compliant rental units. And for consistency with, with terminology, the, the by-right provision is being renamed to the statewide exemption ADU. And this provision is the one that allows a guarantee of at least an 850 or 1,000-square-foot unit, subject to four-foot side mirror setbacks, a max height of 16 feet, as, as long as the unit complies with buyer requirements, building code, and so on, but no lock coverage or other development standards would apply. And as previously noted with Assembly Bill 345, the ordinance is being revised to insert a reference to the government code section 6585 2.26 that allows ADUs to be conveyed separately by a nonprofit corporation. And this is, AB 345 revised this existing section to simplify the process for conveyance of those units. Under the original language, the, the law states that a jurisdiction may create an ordinance to allow separate conveyance. The law was changed to give this benefit to, to nonprofit in any jurisdiction without the adoption of a formal ordinance in, in the local code. And finally, the proposed revisions include some formatting cleanup that relocate existing provisions to more appropriate section of, of the ordinance. The city continues to recognize the importance of ADUs as a source of, of housing and continues to support a streamlined review for homeowners in Oceanside. In 2018, the city received 47 applications for ADUs. It went up to 73 in 2019. In 2020, there was 108. And this year to date, there have been 123 applications for ADU. So there's a, a, continue to see progress and an increase in, in the units. The proposed revisions will help remove ambiguities and provide for better implementation and understanding of ADU provisions by both city staff and the general public. And the changes will strengthen the effectiveness of, of the ordinance and will assist city staff with enforcement of all conditions of approval provided by the ADU ordinance. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission confirm issuance of a statutory exemption per SEQA and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2021 P35, recommending city council approval of zone amendment 2105 and local coastal program amendment 2105 with, with findings. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions, staff? Go ahead. Commissioner Obama.
On the height of an ADU, I, I kind of understand it to be that the height of an ADU, it follows the same zoning criteria of an existing house where you're going to add the ADU, correct?
Correct. If.
The height was 30 feet, then the ADU could be 30 feet high.
Commissioner Obama, that, that is correct. If there was a, if they, if the, if the height exceeds 16 feet, the, the setbacks do have to meet the, that underlying district. So to take advantage of those reduced setbacks, the height is capped at, at 16 feet.
Got it.
Or four, four foot setbacks.
Thank you. I know, because we're in the process of doing an ADU, and I wanted to make sure, because I think ours is going to be a little higher than a 16. So, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rob. This is a public hearing. I don't see anybody in chambers. I don't imagine there's any slips. City Planner? Okay. So we will close the public hearing to public input. And we are looking for particular action here from my fellow commissioners, and that would be in the staff report. So anybody who would like to make a motion along those lines, I'm open to it.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Commissioner Hayes, second?
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Custer. Any other discussion? Don't see any, so let's vote. Commissioner Obama.
Yes.
Vice Chair Morsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Custer.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, staff, for bringing this to us. Okay. Again, item six is being continued till January, so that leaves us with appeal of city planners determination. I don't see anything on tonight's agenda. We already covered item seven earlier. Item eight, if you'll note in your agenda, is, notice that the cancellation of the planning commission meeting on December 27th. So don't be here that evening. Brings us to city planner and commissioners report. I don't have, well, I do have one comment, as many of you know. Mr. Hunt, this is his last meeting with us. He will be retiring, I think, on Friday. And I've been on the commission for a number of years. I'll leave it at that. And so we've had a number of planning, city planners that I've interacted with over these years. And I've always appreciated Jeff's, his professionalism, first of all, and his calm demeanor, because it's not always easy on some of these items that we have in front of us. So he has a, he has a firm, I always felt he had a very firm grip on the issues and the items, a very good planner. And then also the cadence of the meetings and his delivery on, on often very complex issues. So very much appreciated. And I know you're, you're retiring and you've got some plans to spend time with family. We, I wish you well, and I'm, as do, I'm sure, all my commissioners. Thank you for your service to the city and all the best to whatever lies out in your future. Fellow commissioners, if you want to say some words, you're more than welcome to.
I would concur everything that Tom says. It's been a pleasure working with you, Jeff, and I'm jealous.
I also agree with my fellow commissioners. You've been, you've been such an eloquent professional, always to the point, always able to handle everything, and I appreciate that. I mean, I appreciated your, how you handled us also. So thanks, Jeff, for being such a great city planner. I miss you. I'll miss you.
I just want to agree with everything that's been said, and we appreciate your knowledge and work and effort, and thank you.
And I know I haven't been here very long, but one thing I can say, I've absolutely appreciated is how responsive you've been to any questions that we've had and always giving us a lot of information as to what's coming up next to prepare us for future meetings. And just thank you for all of that and for helping me navigate into this new role.
Thank you.
Yeah, that truly is invaluable. As we sit up here as commissioners, we all bring to the table a different level of knowledge or experience. And even for those that have been here for a while, you still forget or you don't quite get it sometimes. And so your guidance is always been very helpful and welcomed, so we'll miss that for sure.
Thank you all.
Vice Chair Morsi, any other further reports?
Well, I do. Sorry, we're trying to...
No, go ahead.
Get out of here to do more important stuff. But anyway, I got this letter from a neighbor, and I just want to read it really quick. It's about eucalyptus trees, and it's about the lack of response from the city, so I thought I would read it. It's dated 12/10. It's from, I have a neighbor, two neighbors on the, between, well, 2344 is the address. It says, "The subject is tree trimming behind 2344 Caddy Court." It's, the letter's addressed to Ms. Larson, the city manager, and it says, "Dear Ms. Larson, in late October of 2021, I spoke to Ms. Jory Liam at the city of Oceanside to request tree trimming of two eucalyptus trees in Landscape District behind my property 2344 Caddy Court. I also recommended the trimming and/or removal of a Landscape District eucalyptus tree that was overhanging my neighbor's property located at 2348 Caddy Court. The limb overhangs the property by approximately 10 to 12 feet. I mentioned that in my experience, a similar situation resulted in a tree branch breaking off in high winds and killing a woman driving along Irvine Boulevard for which the city of Newport Beach paid out $5 million in damages. Ms. Liam did not seem that concerned, but indicated that the trees would be trimmed by the 21st of November. I waited until early December and had called again. She indicated that unforeseen work had come up and she would have them trimmed in December, barring unforeseen circumstances. My neighbor at 2348 Caddy Court had indicated she had called about the trees being trimmed approximately two years ago prior to my call. Based on my experience and my 93-year-old mother's experience, the eucalyptus tree trimming used to be quite punctual. She's lived at the property since the early 1990s. I think in the earlier days of the tract, the trees were trimmed by a private group. My mother indicated that it was usually only a couple of weeks after a call before the trees were trimmed or whatever problem was corrected. She indicated that now she rarely sees anyone. It appears that the service is not what it was. In examining our property tax bill, I noticed that we currently pay approximately 500 per year for the Delora Hills landscape maintenance. Frankly, 500 a year for the small patch behind the home seems a bit excessive, at least in my experience, but this is more a case of paying for services not received, especially if we have to wait years for trees to be trimmed, not to mention potential liabilities that need to be dealt with. Frankly, I don't feel we are getting our money's worth. Perhaps the city should consider privatizing this aspect of the maintenance as it once was. In any case, any help you could provide to remedy the situation, especially my potentially harmful issues, would be appreciated. I have provided copies of this letter to my neighbors along the landscape area to inform them of the situation and allow them to consider their own options. Thank you for your assistance." And just one comment. I live just down the street. I know Barbara lives north side of the city, so she knows that area. They are eucalyptus trees. I mean, during the high winds, they are overgrown. My wife usually calls, but with the winds we've currently had, they come into my pool. And I think, you know, the city is paying somebody to cut these trees every, and I think eucalyptus trees grow so quickly. It's developers' trees, a tree because they grow so fast, but they're just nasty, ugly trees. And frankly, I think we'd be better off just to just eliminate them. And I think we could just probably, I would donate money to, if we had to plant something behind that fence in the district, to do that. But I think the city should consider eliminating these trees because they're just paying money to trim something that nobody wants. So that's it. Thank you. Sorry for that long...
No, thank you.
Diatribe.
Thank you. Let's do this in order. Commissioner Obama?
Oh.
Report?
I have no report.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer?
No report.
Commissioner Hayes?
I don't know if it's a report, but I will be missing the January 10th one. I will be, I'm the chair of the Transportation Research Board's Intermodal Freight Committee, and we have our meeting in Washington, DC on the 10th, so I will not be able to be here.
Thanks for letting us know.
Nice.
City Planner, if you remember or not, Commissioner Raines will be back then, or do we know?
I believe he should be back by then.
So even without, we'd still have a corner.
At this point, we don't have any items for January 10th.
Okay.
I can go into your schedule in a minute.
Okay, great, thank you. Then I'll turn it over to you for your final, to this body, and your final city planner report.
So going into your next agenda, as you mentioned, December 27th was canceled. December 10th, at this point, we don't have any, so it may be canceled. January, pardon me, January 10th. January 24th, we may have 1611 South Tremont. I believe that's four condos. And then going out to February 14th, there's a revetment repair on South Pacific and also Whaley Street, state density bonus subdivision. Your city council planning items on Wednesday, tomorrow night, the downtown use ordinance amendments are going to be heard. This involves modifications from the Coastal Commission. The council needs to re-adopt them. And also the appeal on 1602 South Coast Highway, the four-story building in South Oak that's subject to a state density bonus. And then on January 26, Starbucks at Neptune and Coast Highway is scheduled to be heard along with the ADU ordinance that you just heard tonight. I'll finish up by saying also, oh, by the way, we received news of a new mandate requiring masks indoors starting December 15th, so that'll be effective at your next planning commission meeting. And then I'll just finish up with some comments. I appreciate the kind words you all mentioned. I really, I've been in this business 32 years, and it's really been an honor. But also, I've truly enjoyed my time in Oceanside. It's been so interesting to see the city evolve and grow and change. And I know not everyone likes the changes, but I hear far more people say they do like the changes. And of course, nothing's going to be perfect. Some changes may not be exact. But there's been a number of accomplishments in my seven years. We consolidated three zoning ordinance into one, which was a far heavier task than it sounds. It was really an arduous process. We've started our first general plan update. Some of the elements in the general plan date back to the 70s. I was in college in the 70s. That's old. We've done a number of zoning ordinance amendments, uses and densities in downtown and the coast highways and streamlining our review. We've worked with developers, particularly in the downtown. Some of these entitlements on the five new buildings date back a while, but we certainly worked with them to bring them to construction through substantial conformities and subtle revisions. We've taken on a number of just different programs, a short-term rental permit program, the ADU ordinance that you just heard tonight, the cannabis program, some interesting new programs. So I've appreciated the manner in which the planning commission has dealt with these challenges, and they are challenging to us all. You gave good consideration to the regulations that we inform you of, but at the same time, you consider comments from agencies and staff and interested parties and nonprofits and the public. And it's a tough challenge, and I appreciate the way you've handled that. And finally, I can say with confidence that the planning division's in a good spot right now. It's in a good position. You've got a number of seasoned veterans. You've got some journeyman planners who now have a few years behind them. And we've got two new planners, two rookies, that are really showing a lot of capabilities. So I can, I can rest at night knowing that the planning division and the city as a result are in good hands. So again, I thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I think with that, we stand adjourned.